Let's just to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic.
All right, we'll move on to the approval of minutes for January 6, 2022. Are there any changes?
Yeah, I have something and probably need other people to think about it, too. Just before number 11 in the minute. The middle of the page, back and we move to go into executive session to receive legal advice. And I don't think that the agenda items listed are quite correct. I think it's agenda items, first we don't have the past agenda in front of us.
Yeah.
10A, 13, 16, and 19. It's sort of there, but it's not all together. But that's the best of my recollection. I just thought it was important to have that part real.
Are there any more changes? With no objection and with those changes, the minutes are approved. On to requisitions for January 20, 2022, an amount of $50,894. There are no objections. Those are approved. Accounts payable for January 13, 2022, an amount of $308,400.30. There are no objections. That is approved. For accounts payable for January 20, 2022, an amount of $207,934.99. There were no objections. Those are approved. For manual checks for January 14, for January 14, 2022, an amount of $152,788.22. There are no objections. Those are approved. For manual checks for January 21, 2022, an amount of $13,880.88. There are no objections. Those are approved. For payroll on January 6, 2022, an amount of $260,293.12. There are no objections. Those are approved. Are there any announcements related to that?
No.
So we can move on to number one, Angie Banks, approval of sound directions.
She is one.
Okay.
She's self-healing.
Are you ready for me? Okay, I'm sorry, my dog is barking. Okay. This first exoneration is in our 2021 personal property book, Harpers Ferry District. The taxpayer did not own the 2015 Dodge Ram, July 1, 2020. Assess value 8,800, tax amount $213.77. Taxpayer is Donald Hayden, ticket number 307734.
Move, move, sorry, ticket number 307734.
Second.
It's moving second. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, it carries.
The second exoneration is in our 2020 personal property book, Charlestown Corporation. The taxpayer did not own the 2009 Acura TL. It, well, actually, it was double assessed by two people claimed it, and this taxpayer did not own it. The 2009 Acura TL was double assessed, assessed value 3,500, tax amount $96.88. The taxpayer is Kimberly Strange, ticket number 306657.
I move to approve the exoneration, number 306657.
Second, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, it carries.
Um, this is an apportionment where we are splitting a tax ticket. Okay, the applicant Lisa Weber, ticket number 309007, Harpers Ferry District. Has, she was awarded the 2014 Jeep Cherokee, assessed value 7,600. Her portion of the bill is $184.62. The second applicant is John Weber. He has the 2007 Nissan Pathfinder, assessed at 200. The 2018 Toyota Tacoma, assessed at 14,900. The 2015 BMW, assessed at 5,300. His total portion of the tax ticket, it doesn't look like we add, oh, is $431.80. And, um, and that is all.
I'm going to approve the exoneration, ticket number 309007.
Second, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, it moves.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we can move to number two, Sheriff Tom Hanson.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm coming to you this evening to request permission to advertise that we will provide a $3,000 sign-on signing bonus for certified officers. As you know, law enforcement is currently not a desirable job. Anything we do to entice certified applicants to our department would be a tremendous help. Other local agencies are offering similar bonuses. Bakers Town, $20,000 for Veronel Certified Officer, $10,000 for an out-of-state officer. I feel that it would only prudent for us to do so as well. The sign-on bonus will be payable to the successful completion of their one-year probation. The bonus would be available to any West Virginia certified officer or an out-of-state certified officer that meets the qualifications for what West Virginia calls equivalency certification. What happens when there are in out-of-state officers, we would hire them, send them, send down to the Law Enforcement Professional Standards Board, and they would review it, and they're training. And if they find that it's comparable to West Virginia, then they're automatically quasi-certified until they have to go to a three-week course in Charleston in September. But they're considered certified here in the state of West Virginia. This would not have impact this year's budget, however, as a benefit that would, at some point, need funding, I need to start advertising for, as a benefit now. That's why I'm requesting authorization. We currently have three vacancies, and I'll be requesting six additional positions in my next year's budget. If all of them were certified officers, I would require $27,000 as a bonus. This request isn't to include my budget, it will be included in my budget proposal coming up for the next fiscal year. Given the lengthy process that sheriff's office or any police agency goes through in hiring, this will not, it would be undoubtedly that the budgets would not be paid till the end of next fiscal year. Possibly the fiscal year after that. If we hire somebody, say we hire somebody in the next 60 days, and they're certified, they would have a year to go before they're eligible for it. So January, February, it could be March, April that we hire them. Wouldn't be the March or April of the next year that they would be eligible for their bonus. It'd be a one-time lump sum of $3,000. The reason why I'm coming through you now, instead of waiting for the budget, is I would need to advertise. I need to get the word out. And if this can get me some good certified officers to want to come to work at Jeffs County Sheriff's Office, then I can't wait till the end, till March or April, before I can start doing it.
Is this a line I were moving money around, or is this dish and dish and two?
Dish and two.
Dish and two, okay. Okay.
Well, I have sympathy with the commission and where.
I'm sorry, Ms. I can't hear you.
I have sympathy with what you're trying to do.
Yes.
I understand the final bonus and how that might attract others. But I can't agree to this outside of the budget session, especially with it, you know, it's an unknown right now. And I'll consider it during the budget sessions. And I understand you want to advertise now because it takes a long time.
Yes, ma'am.
But I just can't go there right now.
All right, and again, we still, we do have three positions open right now. And if you won't consider the next budget, would you consider just those three? And then when the budget system comes around, then we would all offer it. But I would love to have it all at one time so that I can just, knowing that the next budget season, you're going to be able to, if you approve positions for me, I'll be able to offer that to them as opposed to offering for these three that I have, and then waiting until the budget season to tell whoever applies that yes, we can give it to them.
Do you have anything in your budget now where you could earmark or transfer those funds for these three so that it's already in there?
I probably do for the three, as opposed to, you know, coming out of, but the problem is, a lot of it is going to come out of hard goods as opposed to salaries. And a lot of the, and the auditors really don't like it when we're taking it from purchasing to put it into payroll.
Yeah, and I understand a sign-on bonus is paid at one time.
Right.
And is not, doesn't impact salary.
Right.
Moving forward, but I'm kind of with Ms. Tab, our Commissioner Tab. If you have something, you could transfer now so that you, we can, you know, a budget transfer.
Okay.
And then if we can, and then we can consider the other ones, come budget deliberation. But you would at least be earmarking or setting that money aside for those three positions.
All right.
Out of your existing budget.
Would you, would the commission be willing to appropriate the $9,000 that we use for this, those three positions, and then go forward with the, with the rest of the budget carry numbers for 2023 budget?
Yeah, I think if you have the 9,000 in your budget right now to keep it budget neutral until we can discuss the other ones moving forward, I'm, I'm fine with that.
It's just an internal budget revision.
Right.
Yeah.
I would be in favor of that. Obviously, I've never participated in the budget yet, so you all do know more than I do. But I do think that the sign-on bonus is probably need to be a priority, given that all the neighboring counties.
Yeah, like I said, Martinsburg gives a $5,000 sign-on bonus for certified officers. Again, Bakers Town is, is through the roof, and we have to be, we have to be comparable. We have to be in, on the even playing with them.
And I totally agree with you and Commissioner Ath. I just, I don't want to pre-commit to funds that we don't know that we have.
I understand.
That's, that's what I'm saying.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we move on to agenda number three, Patricia Greenley.
Hello.
Hello.
So do I just present? Hi.
Hi.
First time knowing this.
Yeah.
Wait, just inform us what's going on.
Sure. A nonprofit organization that provides transition support to victims of domestic violence here at the county. We've been in existence since 2012, and we're purchasing a property to assist victims of domestic violence in transition, whereas they can stay up to one year in housing to, in order to really get the attention that they need to transition successfully going forward. So we have a minor, where the house is that we are purchasing, it's a market, set approved for a minor subdivision. And we are seeking a waiver for the $600 fee. That would definitely put somewhat of a strain on our budget as we get our funding from private donations and from some grants as well. But that fee would definitely, you know, be a hard hit. We're 100% volunteer organization, so, you know, everybody, nobody gets paid in our organization. And any funding that we have go directly to support those who are coming through our program. So we're just asking for that waiver of that fee.
I'm somewhat confused, and I know you said you're in the midst of purchasing this property, but I don't think we can award you a waiver, even though you're the applicant and the owner is Mr. or Mrs. Barry. I don't under, I don't see how we can give you a waiver if you don't own the property yet.
So, so I'll share with you, this is what we've done. So we've actually purchased the property from Mr. from Mrs. Barry. The property belongs to her, not to Mr. Barry.
Okay, I couldn't tell us everything.
Yeah, so the property is, we're in the process of going through the requirements of having the property surveyed and split. But we have already paid for, in full, and maybe I should have brought those documents with me. We have paid for this home in full. We own the home that, that.
The whole property, that's what I'm.
No, so there are two homes on the property. That's all right. There are two homes on the property, which we acquired one of the homes.
Okay.
Miss Barry owns one of the homes. The other home is owned by our nonprofit. We've already paid her for the property. And we're just going through the process that the county requires us to go through. But yes, I can provide documentation to you for sure that we are the owners of the property. But we have paid Miss Barry in full for.
Okay.
That portion of the property.
Well, you know, and I was just looking this up because I don't know, I didn't even know what V A D V meant. So, you know, but it says you have an office in downtown Charlestown, is that?
We have a shared office within Jefferson County Community Ministry.
That's what I thought it was, yeah.
And we've been, we've been here in Charlestown since 2012.
And that's $100.
You saying $600?
It's the $600. That's what I was told by the, the planning.
Okay.
Office.
All right.
Says on comments on the job page, I'm presuming, and it's a the chief of process and the planning commission waiver is $100.
Okay, I may have been mistaken.
Jane, I'm sorry, am I allowed to interrupt?
Yes, you can speak, Jane.
I'm not, I'm not actually on for this agenda item, but I can clarify. There was a waiver that had to be processed, and that was $100, and they did pay that fee. Now they need to subdivide the property. They couldn't subdivide it without the waiver. The waiver has, has been approved, and now they need to subdivide it, and that fee is $600.
Okay.
Thank you. Sorry, I wasn't explaining that.
All right, well, it is a nonprofit, it is for good cause. This sets precedence, but I'm not opposed to waive this fee. So I'm going to move motion to waive the $600 fee for the minor one, subdivision for V A D V Incorporated, which is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization.
Second, is there any discussion? Something I'd like to see, it's, we need a pathway for nonprofits and charities, like a, actually like form or something at the engineering department that they go through.
Yeah, and so then it's all, all the information is verified, and we understand. They are nonprofit, what you do every year. Yeah, just a verification process.
Are there anything? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, it moves.
Thank you so much. I heartily appreciate it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Now we're early.
Okay, around 10 minutes till our hearing.
Is there anything we can do? If Jennifer Russell's on, adapt. Maybe 17.
So what do y'all, y'all talking different things? I'll let y'all decide.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Oh, I was saying 15.
Do we have, I mean, I'm finding one of 15 of us.
You have to say any one, say.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
So number 15, discussion of the executive system conditions. We advertised again because we didn't have it up for, I'm telling you, until December the 17th. We've got some applicants, but we advertised again to get more. And that meantime, we actually received an applicant from Mrs. Carol, which she has resigned. And she is requested to be retired, so I figured I would bring that up before your attention. If you get any information, by the.
When will she be available to start?
Um, Monday.
This coming? What date is that?
24.
And what would, what would her starting salary be, 35?
That would be your decision to make. She was currently making $43,045.34. We advertised it at $43,900, starting out, which is actually $90 more than what she was already making. So it would be your decision to decide what you would make.
Okay, okay. All right, I'm going to move the motion to approve the hire. Ms. Jessica Carroll, start date is January 24, which is Monday. The, the salary, I'm going to, I'll do that for discussion, but I'm okay with like $46,000. What's your thoughts on, sorry?
It's, we need it in the motion.
Okay, I'll do it.
Yeah.
All right, $46,000, all right.
And that's what it was advertised? I was seconded the motion. So the advertisement was to start out at $43,940 to go to $48,334.
And she has, she certainly has experience.
Right, right.
So, she brings a lot to this table, I think.
Okay, I got you.
All right, so move and second it. Is there any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries.
Okay, now prepare P A F and give that sense of payroll.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You said that's it, man.
It's, do we need to go to executive session?
Yeah, yeah, makes up the last 16, 17. And then, I mean, if you wanted to hit 14, knock it out there, but there's really nothing to talk about, I would say. Yeah.
Need updates, I just, yeah.
Our staff's probably been overworked. So the commissioners have updates on legislation.
I know there's a couple pieces out there, and I don't have the numbers, but particularly around volunteer fire departments and funding and who breaks on personal property and that sort of thing. I don't have the specific numbers, but I've seen several come across from the Association of Counties in the past few weeks. I'm watching those particularly because we're looking at, you know, funding sources and that sort of things. But I don't have the, the bill numbers that are being introduced. I just find that there's, there's talk. That's all I know.
Well, the same with you already keeping out, I'm just looking there. I get the, you get that from the Mission Association.
Yeah, so it comes across emails, so that's what I was looking at.
So if you're getting times, it's almost too much.
Yes.
Picked out a couple of everyday raises and stuff.
Well, and I know the one with the fire departments, there's a specific bill earmarked for volunteers, and then there's another section for EDP staffing, so. But they are taking that up on the state level for some type of thing for this.
Well, if there's something else, we can just take a break till 6:30, till the hearing.
Okay, yeah. And the guy.
All right, we're back and we can move on to Gen I number four, public hearing for rezoning request for one acre property located sixteen Old Lee Town Pike.
And just for the record, I'm going to recuse myself because our family rents our land from Mr. Morris. In the hallway.
So who wants to lead off it? Engineering Department or the, or the?
I can, this is Jenny Brockman. I'm not here to represent the applicant. I'm only here to tell you what the planning commission said. So I don't know if you want me to go first or if you want the applicant to explain it or.
Jenny, you can go first, please.
Okay. So this was a request by the applicant to rezone the property at the corner of Old Lee Town Pike and Lee Town Road. That's previously been a commercial use and has zoned village. They wanted to rezone it to residential light industrial commercial. They, you might remember, they'd originally asked for a different zoning category that the planning commission didn't think was consistent with the comprehensive plan, but due to the timing, we were able to have a modified amendment request to the residential light industrial commercial. And at the January eleventh meeting, the planning commission found that because the Future Land Use Guide shows it as future mixed-use residential commercial and the proposed residential light industrial commercial zone allows that mixture that it is consistent with the Envision Jefferson twenty thirty-five comprehensive plan. I assume the applicant is there to speak to his application himself.
Yeah, he's here on the phone. John, do you, do you have anything you want to add to your rezoning?
No, just the way we set it up is fine.
All right. All right. Is there anyone here that wants to make a comment? And if you're online, please raise your hand. So what's the commission's ledger?
I'll move to approve the rezoning requests for the one acre property located sixteen Old Lee Town Pike, Carneyville. Tax map, middleway seven, that number eleven, parcel two point two and two point one, to change the current zoning district from village to residential light industrial commercial, RLIC.
For a second. We're moving second. Is there more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, John.
Okay, thank you. That's it. Thank you.
Yes, sir, buddy.
Bye-bye.
Back in some ridiculous. Yeah. We can go ahead and move to Gen I number six, Steve Allen.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Glad to be here. We all. I'm here before you this, this morning, this evening, in regards to two items. Number one, being the, I believe, the bovine emergency response plan. And this, this grant originally came to us in about twenty twenty.
Right, yeah.
And unfortunately, COVID has struck us for a couple of years on this. But it, it's, it's going to involve conducting a training course that's going to be held here in Jefferson County on Wilshire Road at RSD.
Yeah.
Horse auctions. We expect upwards to fifty people to be able to attend. And those are going to be, and it's intended for first responders, but also some other agencies as well, such as horse owners can, can attend, veterinarians. And I'll just start with fire service, law enforcement, EMS, of course, emergency management, public health, public safety communicators, animal control, and other governmental or administrative personnel that provide support or assistance in dealing with bovine or large animal emergencies. And that would include horses as well. And they'll be coming into, and when I say they, there's a, a group of instructors coming in. And I think one's coming from Oakla, memory serves me right.
I know I never go to camps.
And I know that one nationally known veterinarian is supposed to be here. I want to say Dr. Sharar. I mean, and I'm leaning towards this town because she's been involved in this. Of course, Mr. Hudson's been involved in it since inception as well, and we've carried it on over the last couple of years. But we originally got a grant that the total grant was ten thousand dollars. And since then, and that was to include all of the education, the training, as well as equipment. Since then, in the last two years, prices have skyrocketed. So we contacted the, the state, state administrative, or state, let's see, administrative, administration of state authority, sorry, dealing with the Homeland Security Grant that we got. And they agreed to, they were, they were going to, or now they are going to put all of the training. That's the flying instructors in, putting them up, all of the educational side of it. And we can spend all of the, the ten thousand dollars, and it's actually going to be a little more than ten thousand dollars. They have agreed to increase that amount so that instead of just ten thousand four hundred and thirty dollars for both, it's going to be all of it. That would be able to purchase a trailer, cow panels, gates, and some other assorted equipment that goes along with it. And the idea of this is, we've been very fortunate, and I'm going to knock on wood right now, because we've not had any accidents to the best of mine, at least over the last five years. And I don't know prior to that, I do not recall any, where we had horses or cattle involved in an accident. So we've been really fortunate to, I guess, the rest of the state hasn't. I know of at least four incidents, I believe, that have occurred throughout the state over the last four years or so. A couple of them happened in the Huntington area, the Calhoun County area, and we did have one, I don't believe it was in West Virginia, in Allegheny County or Garrett County, Maryland, where they had a tractor trailer hauling cattle, I believe, that overturned. So we've been very fortunate, but.
And I've heard of one that was hauled, which is even more of a nightmare trying to round up hauls. You know, a double or triple decker trailer was always on it.
So we're, we're working on that. And the first part of this is to procure the equipment. Now, the understanding when we applied for the grant originally was that we, and the money is not sitting in a call for, in, in our, in a, in an account that we have, that the county has. The understanding on this is a reimbursement, just like we do with the emergency management performance grant. We spend the money, then they reimburse us as we send in the bills to them. So in order for us to do that, of course, we have to have your authority to go out and, go ahead and purchase that. And so that's the one portion that I'm here for tonight is if, if you all will authorize us to go ahead and purchase the equipment that we have. That recommended equipment that you have in that list.
And, and this is all grant funded?
It's all a hundred percent grant funded.
I know you have to spend it and then get reimbursed by under.
That's correct, yes.
And, and just me, me, me on the gates and so forth. Did you check at Southern States for their price?
Yes, as a matter of. As a matter of fact, I believe that the, the, the information that I sent to you reflects, I believe, that the, the the panels and the gates are both, I believe, coming from Southern States.
Yeah, it says tractors.
Or is it tractors? Well, I'm sorry. And I do have the, if, if you need to know what the prices were, the comparison prices, we have that.
Oh, just don't worry about that. If that's the best price, that's, I just want to be, you know, just me.
Yeah, it wasn't, and I've got to say, it wasn't very much. It was a matter of six dollars.
Okay.
So, oh, well, when I say six dollars, six dollars per panel. So you're looking at the sixty dollars difference there. And of, of course, we can certainly do that if you allow us to, to keep the money local.
The biggest, just so you know, when you're buying panels, the biggest difference is weight.
Yeah.
Right. I'm sure you saw that, a, a seventy-pound panel looks exactly like a hundred-pound panel, and it's just heavier gauge. And so the seventy pounds are like arena panels, the hundred pounds are like back end panels or varner panels.
And then you've got blue ones that, you know.
Yeah, and we, we went for the heavier duty ones. So, yes, yes, sir. We, we had a lot of discussion in the office about that and with Tim. Tim Smith from RSD. Because, you know, you all are the experts in this kind of thing. We're, you know. I don't, I spent a little bit of time on a farm, but that, that wasn't, that was a cattle farm, I know, so.
Well, and not to belabor this, but we do have to get our dispatchers in on this because
That's right.
so frustrating. We get calls and a little bit of cattle out on the road in Windham, and everybody called us. They couldn't tell us was it beef animal, a dairy animal, what color it was, and whether it was male or female. So, you know, you drive out and you go, it's not ours. You know, that's not nice at midnight when you have to get up at three to milk.
Yes. Is it black and white? Is it red?
Yeah.
Or is it all black? Exactly. That, that definitely has a bearing on who you want to call to come out. Yes.
I'll go ahead and move, move to purchase the equipment for the bovine emergency response program and training course, which will be reimbursed through the Homeland Security Grant, as it were.
Second.
So moving second, is there more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries.
Thank you all very much. The second item I have, and I'm glad Mr. Parker came in, is an application we have. And the, the application that we'd like to submit is for us to conduct our hazard mitigation planning, or hazard mitigation plan, the update for that plan. It's not due until 2024. However, many of you are probably aware that FEMA doesn't move very fast. And as, as shown in our emergency management performance grant reimbursements. But they suggested, and when I say they, the state suggested that we move ahead, a year ahead of time. And instead of next year, put it in for, go ahead and put it in for it this year. So that by the time 2023 comes along and we're starting to, we want to write that grant, or write that hazard mitigation plan and have it done by about September of 2023. So that when January of 2024 comes around and it's due, that we have, we already have that plan in hand and FEMA has an opportunity to look at it. Of course, our local organizations and the local communities have to look at it first and make sure that everybody's happy with it. And then we send it to the state who looks at it, and then it moves up to the federal government. So it takes a little while to, to get that done. And they said we should go ahead and write the application for rewriting the grant now. Nathan, I sent it to Nathan as well to review, to make sure everything was in line. And more or less what we've done is used a lot of the verbiage that we had in the, for the 2018 rewrite. And so it was, it was rather easy for us to do in regards to that, but we had to update it, change the name of some of our sensations, add some additional businesses and industry and things like that. Of course, many additional points that will be in that hazard mitigation plan are going to take into consideration. Part of it will be for pandemic, because we had medical crisis in there, but not necessarily pandemic. So that needs to be established, as well as several other updates. And I'm, I'm here to answer any questions you might have in regards to the hazard mitigation plan, application.
Can we have any questions? Anybody have a motion?
Yeah, I'll move to approve Director Allen's, submit the grant proposal for the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Planning Grant Application in the amount of fifty thousand dollars.
Second. Been moving seconded. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries.
I have a hard topic. We're going to save it here. I don't have to have it tonight, so I've got marked a lot of spots. It's, it's a FEMA document, we have time.
If you could say that by twenty twenty.
Director Allen? Can, can you hear me okay?
I think it's Dick Myers, Deputy Director.
Yes, I just had a question. Did you say that the grant that you were submitting was for fifty?
It shouldn't say.
Thousand instead of six.
Should be sixty thousand.
Oh, I read.
Okay.
Is it on the, okay, yeah. Now, that was a, this type, because I put it off of the, the 2018 and actually increased it.
So it's sixty thousand?
Sixty thousand, I'm sorry, yes.
I will amend my motion for the amount to be sixty thousand.
I second that. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries.
Thank you.
Good catch.
Yes, I, my, my old firefighter ears, I thought you said sixty, so I didn't.
Are these signs or initials?
That's initial, initial there. I didn't have a sticker that said initial here. So it's all initial on those, like fifteen spots there. Thank you all very much.
Yeah.
All right. With that, we can move to Gen I number five, zoning map amendment for property designated in the Sherpas Town text. Is Jenny going to talk about this one too?
Yes, I'm here. Let me first say that there was an error on my staff report, which is what created the agenda. The parcel is actually Charlestown District, map one, parcels twenty-nine and forty-five. But the address that was used in all correspondence and notice of two fifty-seven and two sixty-three Ridge Road, Janandoh Junction is correct. So the address was in the staff report and in the memo and in the ad. But the tax district was incorrect. Tax district and map was incorrect. Their request is to rezone from industrial commercial to residential growth. The planning commission discussed it at their January eleventh meeting. And the Future Land Use Guide of the 2035 Comprehensive Plan shows this as future medium-density residential. It's always been zoned industrial commercial. And my staff report to the planning commission is in your packet if you want any background information. But the comprehensive plan called it medium-density residential to support the concept of having schools that were walkable. And this is land adjacent to TA Lowry and in that vicinity between Janandoh Junction and the school system. And they proposed use is residential growth, which allows a density, a variety of densities of residential uses. So the planning commission found that the proposed zoning map amendment to residential growth is consistent with the Envision Jefferson 2035 Comprehensive Plan. I believe the consultant and the applicant are both online. And I'd be glad to answer any questions. Oh, the consultant is there in person.
In person. Good evening. I'm Chad Wallen, Integrity Temple Services. As Jenny stated on January eleventh, planning commission did find it consistent. It is in the preferred growth area. You know, it is the residential growth. We have contacted both C-Town and Jefferson Utilities. Our available utilities of Longchamp and Duxford Road. It is also, as Jenny mentioned, consistent with comprehensive plan because it is more medium residential in that area. There are three schools within less than three quarters of a mile from there. TA Lowry is across the street. Wildwood's just down the road, and so is Jefferson High School. So we feel firmly that this is very consistent with the comprehensive plan. And I'm here to answer any questions.
Do you have any questions? All right. This is a public hearing, so we'll take responses from the community. If you want to speak, please raise your hand online. We'll give you a minute or so to do that. We'll give you a minute or so to do that. Okay, hearing and seeing none. Is there a motion?
Oh, I will move to approve the rezoning for the property located on Ridge Road, parcels twenty-nine and forty-five, changes zoning classification of property from industrial commercial to residential growth. And that it is, the property is in conformance with the Comprehensive Plan.
It's consistent.
It's consistent with the Conference Plan. Thank you, Nate.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any more discussion?
Oh, I'm just pretty familiar with this area, relative use of some of that. So, yeah, it makes sense, especially with the other properties on the other side. So, well, not on the other side, a little distance away. Sounds good.
All those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Jennifer Myers, hold on.
She's supposed to be all along.
Okay. It's more about twenty minutes early. We can go ahead and do Russ. That's fine.
Oh, Russ is. Our team man is.
He's disguised with his nice beard.
Oh, are you making fun of me? Are you prepared for the call, Russ?
It has to be cold. It's crazy out there.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm here this evening to talk to you in reference to data center refresh for both of our data center complexes. We have our data center complex downtown that serves everyone downtown, prosecuting attorney's office, the county clerk, magistrate's building as far as tax office, administration, engineering, planning, I mean, PIS. And then we have the Bardine Data Center Complex, which is the Sheriff's Department, emergency communications, maintenance out there. The two data centers, just to give you a little background on this, the emergency communication center was originally built out approximately nine years ago. It's had some upgrades and additions during that time. The downtown data center complexes was built out approximately seven years ago. The reasoning that we're here this evening to talk about this is that our hardware has become outdated compared to our software. And what that does to us is now we have current versions of software coming out and will not be able to put them on our hardware because it will not support it. This opens us up to cyber security issues, malware, ransomware, hacking, et cetera, along those lines. The biggest issue that I have had personally was I developed the capital outlay budget request between two and three years ago. This was before the pandemic. And at the time I did that, I estimated that I could do both data centers and do this upgrade for $280,000. If you look at my request tonight, just for downtown is $246,000. So one of the things with this, if the commission approves it, is I, my gathering is that I will come back in this budget session and request an updated capital budget request for the coming year to do the emergency communication center. To give you some of the ideas on how we go about this is we want to do the downtown data center first and run through this to work out the bugs and any kind of issues we have before we go out to emergency communications and work on that part. Unfortunately, that's not the only issues we're facing. What we've had is because of the pandemic, there has been a global wide manufacturing shortage of chips. And I'm sure you've seen that as far as wires and everything like that. Some of this equipment, we have been through this and gone through this negotiation process with our vendors. And our lead time on this is, can be a minimum of six months for some of this. We can't do that. That's just not going to work because we're going to be too far behind. We have been working through that. I don't have answers for that yet. That's just one of the things we are working through and trying to, some of the equipment that we would like to have, I think we're going to have to make an allowance and go with some other equipment that not as, not necessarily whether it's better or worse, but if you are looking at some of this and you don't want downtime, then I have certain vendors that I would prefer to go to. One of the ones that we have used in the past for some of our kind of off-site storage or backups, not really backups, but more like a backup to a backup is a Theis. They're fairly dependable. They're not very expensive. They're not the most reliable. So for our live data sets and things like that, we do not want to use anything that has that. We want maintenance, we want support. If we have something, most of our systems have redundancy built in, but if we have something go down, we prefer to have next business day support. And a lot of our equipment will do what we call call home. So if something goes wrong, it realizes it, it calls home and it says, hey, my serial number is this, I have a faulty processor. And they will overnight those things to us. A lot of things will come out of Ashburn. We will actually have someone on site the next day bringing this to us.
Ah, you're welcome.
Yeah, so one of the other things that we did is I can put this off until now. Dell EMC, which is one of our preferred vendors to go through with this, their fiscal year end is January. And just when's the best time to buy a car? When's the best time? Same thing. And it has proven beneficial. We have negotiated a lot of these prices down. I went back to them Monday and said, I'm going here in front of my commission on Thursday evening. I said, I flat out told them, they can look through our budgets, and they do look through our budgets. So they knew what was budgeted. And I said, you see what I have budgeted, you see what I'm asking for. They said, you've got to help me do anything you can. And they have been helping. So that's been good. My issue with working with Tom Riley, our consultant for the county, is to figure out, okay, we have these quotes, we have these things. That's great, but if I need a car today and you can't do it for six months, then I have to figure it out. I'm here to answer any questions that I can for any of you. I'll try to give you as much information related to these as I can and talk through them, just to give you some ideas of the things we're looking at as far as the data center refresh. We're looking at our virtualization, we're looking at our host. And hosts are, if you think of a server, hosts are the ones that are going to host these virtual servers. So what you used to do is if you needed a server, you purchased a physical box and put it here. Now we do something similar, but they're called hosts and they are much beefier servers. And then the virtualization runs on top of those hosts. So now if, let's say Nathan is running an apartment and he says, hey, Russ, we're having all of these cases that are coming up, and I'm going to need a new server to run the software. Instead of having to go out and purchase it, we simply provision that server off of these hosts. The licensing is included in that, so that comes through and is covered for the life of this equipment as far as we have had. That's the one part. As I was talking about storage, we have our live storage. We also have what's called our backup and replication storage. And replication was not something that we used to do. We used to have backups, but now the issue is, okay, you have your live storage, you have your backups. Let's say ransomware gets in and takes care of this. What we are working on now is replicating between the two data centers. So if one data center gets hit or the other gets hit, we've replicated out to the other to minimize any downtime and hopefully take care of issues that having to do with that. We also have our core networking and our distribution and application networking. Core networking is where you have this backup infrastructure, you have host infrastructure and your virtualization. Your core networking is putting all those together and they're talking at much higher speeds than, say, end users. Your application and distribution networking is the part that goes out in the different buildings and actually connects, say, your computer and your computer to a switch that connects back to that virtualization center. And those are the parts of that that have gone through. We've worked with HP Enterprise. They are one of the vendors that we've worked with. We've worked with Dell EMC. They work with another vendor called Synology. And then another one is Storage Networks that we have relied with. Have, have a wonderful gentleman at Storage Networks that discusses things with myself and our network consultant, Tom Riley, to go through. And we say, this is what we're looking at, this is what we're trying to do. In your experience and these end users that you deal with, people like myself, let me know, tell me what's working for them, what's not working for them. And all of these have provided quotes to us. It's broken out to a number of parts. As I said, the host, the storage live, the backup replication, core networking, the distribution and application networking. And this is one that, that we're going to work through. The budget number that I put in for this evening for you all, if you approve that, would be the maximum amount we would spend. Currently, what I'm looking at now, if we were able to get the different parts and they were able to ship them, I believe I'm down to 213,000. But again, I'm having issues. It's like, great, you gave me a quote.
Yeah.
When, when trying to get the equipment? So that's the issue.
So what you're saying is there's, you, we had earmarked 250,000 and backup outside of both.
Two hundred and eighty thousand is what I requested.
To do both?
Yes.
Yeah, downtown and out of bargaining.
That is correct.
Now with price rises and support, we're going to, but this number, 247,000 is only for the downtown data center.
That is correct.
And I'm just wondering, this is your priority? This is where you want to go first to do the upgrade? Or that's what you have to do to make it work?
We definitely prefer to start down here. They're very similar. The two data centers are very similar. They're not exactly similar, but very much so. So that when we put this equipment in the software and we start to move everything over, we can work out the bugs.
Right.
And because obviously if you have engineering having an issue, that's one thing. You have emergency communications, that's another good thing. So that's why we're trying to do it that way.
Okay.
I'll go ahead and move a motion to approve the downtown data center refresh upgrade in the amount of 246,910.95. Yes. This will be, this money will be pulled from our capital outlay project fund.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any more discussion?
I would just like to verify the, what we have in capital outlay, but I know we don't have that right now.
I will just make this a note that I realized the deficiency nine months ago and discussed it some at that point and was told that if the commission would approve it, that funds would be available. Now, obviously, that was nine months ago.
Well, and, you know, and I don't know if, I don't guess any of this could be used with ARPA funds. I don't know. I don't know how, might apply. It may not. That might be a nice pipe dream.
Well, I can tell you that one thing when we discussed the ARPA funds, another one is our email system, and we have discussed upgrading that. That we want to get upgraded and I put an ARPA request in for that. My understanding is that is how we communicate with our citizens and communicate with everyone. So that would fall under our.
Okay, at least that portion.
Yes.
Okay, all right, that sounds good.
I could certainly redo my motion to include our, if we find it's available, not when used capital outlay.
Yeah.
So I want to go ahead and amend my motion to, my amendment will include to approve the downtown data center refresh and upgrade for the amount of 246,910.95. The money will be, if we can check to see if the money can be used and pulled out of ARPA. If we, if they cannot, it shall be pulled out of the capital outlay project fund. And so we can find out, because Michelle's back on contract, that if we can pull it out of ARPA, if not, we can pull it out of capital outlay.
I was going to say, the gentleman that I work with at Storage Networks, I can tap him as a resource and see if he knows if any of his clients are utilizing that.
Okay.
Okay, I'm going to second that amendment to the.
Okay. Some more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, take care.
I want to invite each of you again, anytime that you'd like to come, discuss anything that we have to do with our data centers, virtualization, how we utilize our resources and what's done at either place, please feel free.
I did manage to get, finally get back on the surface.
Do you believe this isn't my head? I use both. If I'm going to be typing and actually working, I typically use a Surface. But if I'm referring to notes, if I'm waiting and I'm trying to, you know, I know.
Yeah, no, I was talking about the bill pay, the invoice.
Oh, I couldn't get on for the past two cycles.
Did you get on?
I did, managed to get on.
Well, please contact me if we have those, because some of those, the virtual machines, and this is something that when we talk about the build out and how everything has grown substantially, is we have that capability on both complexes to assign you a virtual machine so that you can, from anywhere in the world, log in and access the resources that we have here. You know, as long as you have an internet capability. And those are not the most expensive thing, they're not the cheapest either. So, you know, we do it on a as-needed basis. Someone comes up and says, hey, we really need this for this.
And I was going to say, thanks for being so efficient when, was having the trouble to find the workaround.
Myself, Anna Rosen, Mr. Tom Riley, the network consultant. Mr. Riley has been excellent with us. He has been an excellent backup for myself. As you, some of you may or may not know, I have been ill, I was ill approximately eighteen months ago, spent some time in the hospital. If I'm not available, Sandy McDonald can get ahold of Mr. Riley. And he is on top of our environment. And one way or the other, if he can't help you, he knows the resources to talk to, to help that if something happens.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Always be in the back.
See if we can go back to number seven and see if Jennifer Myers is on line.
I am here.
Good evening.
Hi, how are you guys?
Good.
Um, I am here this evening. As you may remember, it's been a while ago, but I had come back to you a few, several months ago and let you know that we are looking at purchasing a piece of property that connects Molten Park down along the Shenandoah River. And that, that project is continuing forward and we hope to be able to take ownership of the 82 acres sometime within the next three to six months. And as part of that project, we are looking for grants and anything that we can do to help with development of the park and making, making the most of it for the community. So the Chesapeake Conservancy is a group that we have been working with as long, as well as West Virginia Land Trust, the National Park Service is now involved to make this project happen. And the Chesapeake Conservancy is in the process of applying for a economic development grant and is going to include Jefferson County Parks and Rec in that grant application to help us attain $150,000 grant to do a concept plan and master plan for Molten Park. So I'm here tonight, I guess on behalf of Jefferson County Parks and Rec as long, as well as the Chesapeake Conservancy, to ask the county commission to approve a, a letter of support for that grant application and for the master planning of Molten Park. And I believe Sandy said you had the letter.
I'll move to approve the grant application of Jefferson Parks Recreation and Chesapeake Conservancy and approve the, for the master plan or for, for the support and development of the master plan for Molten.
Molten.
Molten Park, excuse me. There we go.
Second, is there any discussion?
Yeah. It says we're approving a grant application, but we don't have a copy of the grant. I'm fine with doing the letter of support for the grant application. I'm a little confused exactly about what we're doing.
So it's a letter of support for.
The grant.
For the grant application.
Okay. Okay, all right. We don't actually see the grant or know that we have to derive action funds?
No, this is supporting it.
Okay, just, just want to make sure where we were, not committing ourselves too much. No, I, your message has been seconded. Okay. No, I think this will be a great. No, I think this will be a great opportunity for the community and for Jefferson County. It's near the river. It's, whole area is heavily used. Maybe misuse would be the proper term. And with more acreage that can be developed, that will handle the problem. A great thing for the county and for lots of visitors.
All right, is there any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries.
Thank you, guys. Thank you guys very much. I appreciate it.
Agenda item number 10, Rebecca Hall.
Good evening.
Evening.
So I was here last meeting and had the grant contract signed enforcement, because it switched presidents a new signature. So of course, I'm sure I'll still wouldn't accept.
Oh, okay.
The wrong signature. That's okay. Get it right this time. I think I have them all marked there.
And this is still the supplemental vote agreement?
Yeah.
You just brought us, yeah.
Yeah. Just a supplemental one where they cut the federal funds. Let's see if legislature, legislature came up with additional funding.
If we don't know this already.
Yeah.
And I would say next, if this ever happens again, you probably don't have to come to, if I just drop it off now, but Sandy, we.
I think contracts always have to come from the commission.
Oh, you know, we already voted on it? Okay.
Your signature, they need a signature.
Okay, because, yeah.
Well, I was going to make this really official. And then it moved that county commission president, Caleb Hudson, signed, approved the supplement. We have approved it in pass, but authorized county commission president, Caleb Hudson, to sign the supplemental grant contract.
Still moving seconded. Is there any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post.
That's official.
Now we've covered all of them. I'll still be back probably in March to get the application signed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, babe.
Still got eight minutes for the interviews. Anything else else you can do?
Is Lynn on? Lynn feels what she are?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
There you go.
Yes.
Do we need to be a judiciary report?
It says, sitting in a regular.
All right, Lynn, you can go ahead.
Okay, so the agenda item that's in front of you tonight is a petition to probate in solemn form. And just to clarify what that is for anyone that's not familiar, maybe hasn't been a part of one of these petitions before. The code states that when someone opens probate and there is a will, we have to have, the, the probate office has to have the original signed last will and testament witnessed and notarized with original signatures. There, from time to time, it would happen that maybe the executor or the family could not find the original will, but they did retain a copy of the will. And in that case, this procedure has to happen before the county commission that sits, sits as our probate court to approve that the copy of the will can be probated as, as an original. So that's the case here. And it is the last will and testament of Mr. Charles Ferguson, Charles L. Ferguson. And Evelyn Stevenson is the, the named executor in the will. And through counsel, she has petitioned for approval to probate the copy of the will in solemn form. And I think you all should have a copy of, of the will and the petition.
Yeah, I, I've reviewed all the paperwork that our documentation's been provided and I'm satisfied that the copy of the will is a valid copy of original. So I'm going to move that we approve the petition of Evelyn A. Stevenson's to probate in solemn form the last will and testament of Charles L. Ferguson deceased.
Second. Moving seconded. Is there any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
You too. We can move to number nine, interviewing appointments to Jefferson County Emergency Services Agency. Is there anybody on the line? Good evening, Mr. Shuts. How you doing?
Good evening. How's everyone? Very good. I'll, I'll go ahead and ask the question here, I guess. Well, why do you want to serve on this board, this Jefferson County Emergency Services Agency?
Well, I've been a volunteer in the county. This is my 35th year coming up. I'm the, also the fire chief at Friendship Fire Company in Corpus Ferry. This is my eighth year doing that. I served on the, I served as the liaison for the Jefferson County Fire and Rescue Association year before last. And I got to join the folks there on the board. Got familiar with how the board operated and, and the functions of the ESA. So basically, I just want to get on there. I've, I've been around since ESA's inception. And I like to get on the board to make a difference and see it prosper into the future.
I have a, I have a question, Ronnie. So is, so being the chief of Friendship, is there an opportunity or will there be a conflict in the future with you being appointed the association person for the board?
No, ma'am, I don't, I don't feel that it would be at all. You know, at the end of the day, it's all about the ESA moving forward. I mean, and me as a member of the, of the board, that's what I would be as a board. I would separate that from being the fire chief of, of the fire department at that point.
So they came around to you serving as representative of the fire association. You just turned that down if you were appointed to the board.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, Mr. Shuts, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
What do you think is the biggest challenge before the ESA right now?
Right now, the biggest challenge, I think, with them is, is getting the, the manpower to assist the volunteers. You know, as, as everybody knows, we have two stations right now that doesn't have staffing in them at all. I think that's the biggest hurdle of them figuring out how they're going to, you know, approach, you know, you, you all to figure out how to fix that problem. You know, I know it's not, it's not going to happen overnight. I mean, we've been years getting as far we, far as we have, and yet we have, you know, ways to go. So that's, that's the biggest hurdle with staffing, I think, at this point in time.
Okay, thank you.
Well.
And is there any more questions? Thank you, Mr. Shuts. Is the next person on the line?
Three names were given. It was Ronnie Shuts, John Paul James, and Mike.
There we, that's, we're right at. Yeah, we're right, so. Wait another minute, then maybe move forward.
These are the three names that were picked by the.
She's fire.
Bob Boss had this on, so that's.
Months. That's why I was curious.
Yeah, yeah. I think it got too much handled with what he was involved in.
All right, well, if they're not there, is, further, you know?
I know all three, but I do prefer them to interview, at least with that being said. Mr. Ryan Shuts, he served one of the emergency services states, board, one term ending June 30th, 2022.
And I would like to nominate John Paul James. I've not known him, you know, personally, personally, but I think he would bring a balanced approach.
Great. Do you want to make some, hearing none, closed. All those in favor of Ronnie Shuts, say aye. Aye. All right, it's two. All those in favor of jump board? Aye. Is it just?
I'm three.
All right, three.
I'm sorry. That's my language.
So it looks like Mr. James will be the next.
For a whole. Good, good.
So did you want to do the personnel or?
Doing all of them.
We could probably do them all.
Yes.
You should be asked that. Would, you mean, any of your items can be done in executive session?
Yeah, we should be here, because we had a couple of issues to discuss. Primarily, I would need to discuss question two, point 209, regarding the post-Solar Text Amendment matters related there to that. And that would really be my entire matter. However, I did know that Commissioner Jackson added number 19. And I would like to provide some legal advice regarding that issue. So, I mean, I don't know what she wants to do in open or executive session, but I would like to provide you some legal advice regarding that.
I agree with that, is that I would like to have some legal advice.
So Nathan, the one you need is two?
Two and number 19.
Two and 19, okay. I'll, I'll move that we go into, move to go into an executive session to receive legal advice for agenda items number two, under Nathan Cochrane, and also for number 19 on our agenda.
Oh, also, I'm sorry, in number 17, I'm sorry, not, not said, 16. I had some legal advice and potential contractual issues on that.
Okay, okay. And also to receive legal advice on agenda item number 16, and also for us to discuss, or in discussion with the county commissioners on 17, an executive session, the county administrative plan.
I'm sorry, I'm in the, the assistant, the assistant, the temporary financial.
Number six.
Number six.
Oh, okay, okay. For Nathan, two, six, and 19, to receive legal advice by, by Nathan Cochrane. And also I want to include 16 and 17 for the county commissioner to discuss these two items in the executive session.
Second, is there any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor of going into executive session, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries for an executive session.
I'm in.
Or is there a motion to go back into regular sessions, I would say, sorry.
Yes.
All right, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, I'd like to move a motion to approve, to authorize our chairman to sign the vendor document to approve Michelle Gordon as a vendor.
I'll second.
All right, so moving second, is there any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I would also like to move to approve the hire of our county administrator, our new county administrator. Gentlemen's name is Mr. John Nissel. His start date will be on February 16th. His salary will be $110,000. And this is all obviously subject to a background check. I would like to add that Mr. Nissel was a great candidate. He comes to us with 30 years, 33 years experience as a leader working with both public and private sectors. And I'd also like to add that Mr. Nissel is actually a Shepherd University graduate as well too. So welcome aboard and we're glad to have it.
I'll second the motion.
Moving second, is there any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Any more, anything else we need to do on the agenda? Hearing none, we are adjourned. Oh, we get public comments. Oh, yeah, public comments, sorry, we were not adjourned. If you want to make a public comment, please raise your hand online. You have three minutes.
Yes, we don't have any.
With that, we are adjourned.